Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of the City of Lakewood, Lakewood, Colorado on June 22, 2020 at 7:02 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Good wine?
Here.
Ada?
Here.
Skilling?
Here.
Springsteen?
Here.
Franks?
Here.
Johnson?
I'm here.
Labir?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
You have a form.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting and remind you that if you'd like to participate during general public comment or on the second reading ordinance, that number will be 346, I should start over, 1-346-248-7799 with the webinar ID of 988-9129-1693 and you'll press *9 to speak when you want to have that opportunity. I would ask that one quick change, and this has been kind of the every other week thing, is to move the motion before the body to extend the emergency declaration for two more weeks. I would like to move that prior to the consent agenda, so that will still come after public comment and Ms. Hodson's executive report. With that, I'd ask that you please join me in the pledge of allegiance and will remain silent for a moment of prayer. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. So we are back. So next up on our agenda is public comment. So this is the live public comment through Zoom, and this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the City Council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the City Council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a City Council meeting held in person in chambers. Again, that number is 1-346-248-7799, web ID 988-9129-1693 and *9 to speak. You'll have three minutes. I'll tell you when you're down to 30 seconds and then politely ask you to wrap up. Let me get my timer on. Just as a technical note, I see that the recording is paused. We having technical difficulties or? I don't know, Channel 8 hasn't mentioned anything to me. Mr. Goldstein, does everything seem like we're okay? All right, Madam Clerk, do you, we have anybody in line?
Yes, first caller ending in 3982.
Caller 3982, good evening. Will you please give us your name and address and we'll start your three minutes?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Eric Brandt and I live in Lakewood, Colorado.
Good evening.
I'm talking to you tonight because as I'm sure you guys know by now, you are all defendants, and you're defendants for a reason. You're defendants because your police chief is lying to you, and I'm asking you if you're going to pay attention to the various cities around our country. If you think for one moment that you are immune from these issues, you have woefully deceived yourself, woefully deceived yourself. You have a council that's made up of precisely one minority, and I'm not sure that she even knows what she got into, but my question would be, Anita, are you going to step up to the plate and lead these people, or are you going to be just another sheeple like the mayor of Denver? Right? So you're not here to be my friend tonight. You're not. What you're here to do is you're here to lead your country, you're here to lead your nation, and you're here to do that by your own little sphere of influence. I want to read from a letter that your police chief gave you just recently, okay? He said that the Lakewood Police Department is shocked and appalled and disgusted by the murder of George Floyd. We're offended by this outrageous conduct, this conduct that has portrayed members of the police department in negative light. You've earned it, right? And I know nobody wants to listen to me, but maybe now since there's more than one of me out there, you're going to listen, right? Because if you ask Minneapolis, I don't think that you need to build a new precinct, but I think that the people will make you do it if you don't listen, okay? And I'm going to tell you that your police chief is lying to you. He wants you to have faith and trust in the members of Lakewood Police Department, and I'm going to quote, "The Lakewood Police Department takes incredible pride in our professionalism and our ethical and principled staff. We have extremely stringent standards, relevant and ongoing training, and a very disciplined code of conduct for our police agents. We have not, and we will not, ever tolerate the mistreatment of an individual, ethical violations, racism, or abuses of authority." Not my words.
30 seconds.
Those are your words. And I want you to know that your police chief, your police chief wants a permanent lifetime protection order banning Eric Brandt from your city because I called them douchebags and sack fuckers. Well, welcome to the 21st fucking century, motherfuckers.
Please wrap up your comments.
I muted him.
Okay, your time is up. Okay, all right, again, just please encourage the committee to remember the decorum and know that this is live and certainly there may be some kids watching, so we'd encourage you to please keep those comments directed at us, and if you could watch your language, we'd much appreciate that. Okay, so Ms. Salazar, next, please?
Next caller is called Liberty Freak.
Okay, Liberty Freak, if you please give us your name and address. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Liberty Freak, if you could please give us your name and address.
Sure, my name is, my name is Abreu Azari, and I live within my body. I just wanted to let you guys know, I was actually arrested by the Lakewood Police Department from my own residence in charge with trespassing because a stranger said that she didn't lock me there, right? I was also at the same incident where Mr. Brandt was charged with a crime for shining his flashlight on police officers, right? Actually, for flashing a flashlight at police officer, right? And I have letters from the police department, I have letters from the police union and everything, wanting this man to do several years in jail, have a restraining order permanent lifelong, simply because your police department does not want to be called names. We see by Mayor, Madam Paul, that freedom of speech is not something that's very welcome, right? But you see, when you can't fight back, and all you have is words, and they're telling you that you can't even use your words to defend yourself, then what does the First Amendment really protect? Why does the Westboro Baptist Church get to scream the uglinesses that they want? Why does the KKK get to scream whatever they want? They get hundreds of thousands of dollars in protection. Yeah, we call a police officer a fat pig, a flashlight or something, and we get arrested and prosecuted. Where is our protections in this city? Okay, I got arrested, and then I stake a claim against you guys, which I'm suing, I'm suing the city in two different claims. I'm giving an informal advertisement now of it, okay, two lawsuits which you're not going to win. Because you see, your police officer violated the law by shining his flashlight in my face, okay, and obstructed my view as a journalist, and yet your city rejected it. You could have just paid $500 and got rid of me, but you people are so arrogant and so blind to the Constitution and what's really going on that over your arrogance and your ego, now you're going to face a lawsuit in federal court. Could have gone away for $500, but it didn't. But for the same reason that I'm suing you, it's the same reason that Mr. Brandt was found as a criminal, a criminal.
30 seconds.
Yeah, your police officer absolutely admitted, not only in his statement, but in testimony in court, that he violated the law and my right to journalism and violated my First Amendment, and he bragged about it arrogantly in court. So I have all of the transcripts and everything, and yet your city still has a problem with the First Amendment, okay? I don't like what people have to say. They trespassed me from my own home because my neighbor didn't like what I had to say.
Please wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry?
Please wrap up your comments.
How does a man get trespassed from his own home because his neighbor didn't like what he had to say, and how does the Lakewood Police Department back that up?
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Call ending in 0587.
0587, name and address, please, and we'll get your time started.
Hi, my name is Kathy Sincere, and I live at 125 South Zephyr Street in Lakewood, and I'm a 40-year resident of this city, which I obviously love. And I would also like to say that I support the Lakewood Police Department. I think they do a fantastic job, one of the best police departments in the United States. So thank them for their service. Um, I do have one problem that I'd like to talk about. There's been an encampment at First and Wadsworth, about half a block into east of Wadsworth on First Avenue, on the driveway going into Pet Smart. And I did call Lakewood PD on Friday and ask them if it could be cleared out, and they said they would report it. And I went by there today and nothing's been done. And, um, you know, it's a very large encampment of umbrellas and boxes and bedrolls and a little tent, and I don't want to see these things cropping up. I know we have a homeless problem, and, um, you know, we have handles for that, and I'd like to see an alternative to somebody living on First and Wadsworth. Does anybody have any thoughts about what can be done for that?
So, mister and sir, we'll finish out public comment and we'll come back, okay?
All right. So that's all I wanted to talk about.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Ms. Salazar?
Call ending in 0084.
0084, please give us your name and address for the record, and we'll get your time started. Good evening.
Good evening, John Henderson. How are you all? I wish I could see you all, but that'll have to wait for another time. I'm not here to talk about special districts. That'll come up at a later time, but I did want to take the opportunity to talk about body cams. As you all know, the state recently passed legislation mandating body cameras for all police forces. Jefferson County has them, where I practice down in Colorado Springs. El Paso Sheriff's Department has them, but Lakewood doesn't. And I'm hoping that you all will give some consideration to using the Tabor money that was spent last year for an armored vehicle and ballistic equipment, using some of that money for body cams and, of course, alternative, I'll say policing, but alternative social work and mental health resources. As you all may know, the last 21 years of my career was as a public defender in the state and the federal system in Kansas and then here in Colorado. I've looked at thousands of police reports. I've cross-examined well over 100 police officers, conducted investigations, and I can tell you from my experience, police reports are at best less than 50% accurate. We know that because when the police officers testify, they contradict statements they made in the police reports. When their co-police officers testify, they contradict information in other police reports, and of course, neutral independent witnesses do the same. Body cams don't lie. We know that from recent events. They're the best evidence of what actually happened, and any good prosecutor will tell you they are critical where they're available resolving cases, and I'll tell you the same thing.
30 seconds.
We had an incident before council recently where a number of folks from the public and the council basically incriminated one of your own members based upon police reports. And I respectfully suggest to you that was improper. Body cams are the best evidence. I invite you to spend the money now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mala, or Ms. Springer? Salazar?
Call, call ending in 2809.
2809, your name, address, please, for the record?
Carol Baum, 1447 South Welch Court in Lakewood. And my comments tonight are about Anita Springsteen, who I feel has been treated unfairly. Anita is an amazing person who has done many acts of service for others in the community. She was concerned about the fees and fines that the Jefferson County Libraries were placing on children's materials and was able to eliminate these for not only children, but also for everyone, which greatly helped low-income families. She initiated the entire renovation of Lasley Park. Because of her efforts to get a grant to renovate the dangerous playground, the city decided to put one and a half million dollars toward revamping the whole park. She was a part of the leadership team that guided the renovation. Anita served as president of the Greenbrier Cloverdale Neighborhood Association for more than five years. Through her leadership, she not only helped to inform the people about issues that are important, she also helped by applying for grants to improve the neighborhood. She was a coordinator for the VIP program at DU, which assisted inner-city youth to apply and prepare for college. She has mentored many young Hispanic women trying to attend college and law school. Anita has done years of pro bono legal assistance for those who need help with various legal needs and are unable to afford an attorney. Anita helped to prevent the deportation of a Guatemalan man who had fled from death threats by gangs. She spent 10 years on this case with an asylum petition and received very little pay for the help she gave. She also has volunteered in Denver to help homeless and low-income defendants. Anita has also worked for years to try to ensure the safety of her memory care neighbors in the group home in her neighborhood. In addition, she has protected her neighbors from repeated code and health violations by the group home management. In May of 2020, Anita tried to set up mediation between the neighbors and the group home managers, but the managers refused to cooperate. She continues working to make her neighborhood a safe and pleasant place to live. She worked on the Strategic Growth Initiative and made many sacrifices to help create smart growth in Lakewood. She volunteers on a regular basis in her children's classrooms, and Anita's track record clearly shows how much she cares And Anita's track record clearly shows how much she cares about others and deserves our respect and gratitude for the many hours she has spent in trying to make a better quality of life for people, no matter what their circumstances. Her dedication and
Thirty seconds.
are both inspiring and commendable, and Anita is a great asset to our community. And I want to thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Ms. Salazar?
All ending in five six two seven.
Five six two seven, good evening. Could you give us your name and address?
Yes, this is Lynn Judson, eighteen oh five South Van Gordon Street, Lakewood, Colorado, eight oh two two eight. And thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to speak to you. Um, I wanted to back up what Carol said about Anita. I feel she's a very compassionate and intelligent lady, and she's a very good example for all of us. Um, and I also don't understand why this incident comes to light now when it happened at least four months ago. That's very strange. And she did ask for mediation. It's, you know, I don't know everything about it, but I know that she tried to resolve it peacefully. And she wasn't involved directly anyway, so I don't think that she should be penalized in any way. Um, also, I wanted to just, um, mention at this time, because soon we're going to have a study session. I know you've heard me talk about 5G before, but what I want to talk about is how it could affect our property values and our revenues in Lakewood. I read in the Urban Institute that property taxes are one of the largest sources of revenue for local governments. And what 5G could mean for our property values is if you have a similar home, and this is a survey by, published by Realtor Magazine, a similar home with four bedrooms, two baths, a living room, um, family room with fireplace, um, and all-new appliances, with the only difference between them being that one has a 5G, quote, "small cell tower" out in front. Um, the difference in the retail price for these homes is three hundred and seventy K for the one with a tower and four hundred and twenty-five K for the one, the identical home without a cell tower. So that's a fifty-five thousand dollar difference. And I want to say this could be reflected in our city revenues because how much of our city revenues come from property taxes? According to a survey published in Realtor Magazine, ninety-four percent of home buyers said they are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. That's very important when we talk about densification. I would just support our residents, um, that I have talked to, many residents that want us to space out cell towers so that they are at least a thousand
Thirty seconds.
And thank you for your consideration. I do note, one more thing, on the disclosures to stockholders by the cellular companies, they're saying things like, "Our business could be adversely affected by findings of product liability for health or safety risks from wireless devices and transmission equipment." Thank you for your time. I appreciate your help and your service to the city.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Salazar?
Call ending in nine nine four eight.
Nine nine four eight, good evening. Give us your name and address and we'll get you started.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Wajado. I am at two one seven four South Fieldway, Lakewood, Colorado, eight zero two two seven. And I'd like to just thank you all for your service and taking good care of us during this time of COVID. I felt very safe, even though we're one of the larger suburbs in Colorado. I especially like to thank my, um, counselors, Dana Grubine and Karen Harris tonight in Ward five. Um, I'm calling tonight. I received an email from a friend, who's Counselor Anita Springsteen. And I don't know if you're going to take action on an email that was sent by one of her constituents. Um, I wanted to let you know that the texts that were sent, um, the texts that were sent to Sandy Weathers, um, she called, Anita called me right after those texts were sent and was in horror that she had sent them accidentally. Um, they were intended for me and I just want you to know that. I, I was concerned with the tone of the, the email, that there would be legal action that she sent harassing texts to Sandy. Um, and I just want to let you know that, um, I have records of our phone discussion and um, you could easily see those texts are written in third person for somebody else. And I just want to thank you for your service. And if I could be of service further in that matter, please let me know. Um, but that's why I called in this evening. And again, thanks for everything you do for us. I appreciate you. And thanks for having these public forums available for us as citizens. Have a good evening.
Great, thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Uh, caller, just call me daddy.
Okay. So caller, you're available. If you please give us your name and address for the record. Good evening. If you give us your name and address and get going on your three minutes. Hello? Is there anybody there?
We may have to come back to him.
Okay. Ms. Salazar next.
Caller ending in four three eight one.
Four three eight one, good evening. If you give us your name and address, we'll start your three minutes.
Is that me?
Uh, yes, four three eight one, good evening.
Good evening. Um, my name is Gwen and I live in my skin.
Great.
Um, calling about a logo that I noticed on your employee relations webpage. It's a registered FBI symbol for pedophilia. And I'd like to know if you're trafficking children, if you're in support of that. Um, the logo is famous. You can look it up yourselves. It's disgusting to see. There's several logos being used. And, um, just, uh, want to know, are you supporting, uh, human trafficking and using symbolism to signal and solicit others to get a little more business? What's, what's really going on? Because citizens aren't being fooled anymore. We're fed up. Put a fork in your fanny, you're done. We're done. It's gonna stop and you're busted. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Ms. Salazar?
All ending in one one four three.
Good evening, one one four three. If you'd give us your name and address, please, we'll start your three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ruski. I live at fifteen thirteen Estes Street. I want to know if you have corrected the problem of police complaints going to an empty email address that never gets answered. It's my understanding that you haven't received a complaint against your police department in two years because nobody was checking the email box. And I want to know if that goes into your assertion that you have the most marvelous police department in the state? Is there anybody there that would look into that and find out why you went two years without a single complaint? And are you going to make those complaints public now that, as, well, as was just said, that now that there's a fork in your ass and you're done? And I wanted to comment earlier, you made a comment about having to watch our language. Hey, I don't know if you've been watching the fucking television, but everybody in the world is saying fuck the police. I think Eric Brand has it right on the nose. You guys aren't perfect. Fuck the police.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Salazar?
Call me, call ending in two five eight nine.
Good evening.
Hi, how's it going?
Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Donald Smith and I'm calling all the way from Vancouver, British Columbia, Canada here. And the reason why I'm calling in because, you know what? What you guys are doing to Eric Brand is very bad. Eric Brand is a very good cop watcher, who's been basically assaulted. He's been hurt, he's been in jail, he's been imprisoned, and I don't know what's wrong with your police department. But it's disgusting what I'm feeling and I'm very sorry, but I'm gonna say Eric Brand's a good friend of mine. And I run a YouTube channel called News Now Canada Independent Reader. But we do have dittler cops up here in Vancouver who basically just get away with stuff. And I know you guys have the same thing in Canada, I'm saying same thing in Lakewood, but it's just, it's disgusting. It's disgusting. So, why don't you guys leave Eric Brand alone and basically help him out and basically put him out so he can get out of your guys' hair. So have a great day and goodbye.
Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Call ending in five eight four five.
Caller five eight four five, please give us your name and address.
You can call me daddy and I'm in Minnesota. Listen, I'm calling in because to your police in Lakewood. I want to know why are y'all talking about decor? Did y'all give any decor, did you tell the police to give any decor to, when they were choking the guy out? And, and Eric Brand was filming that? Did you, did you tell them to give, throw some decor in? Y'all are disgusting. And I know you don't care because I can look at your face right now and tell each one of y'all uh, are, don't give a damn. Um, and I can look at that, that guy with the glasses on. Y'all disgusting. Y'all need to get another job. Y'all need to be booted out and, uh, fuck the police.
All right, Ms. Salazar?
Call ending in two four zero zero.
Or two four zero zero. You're there. If you'd give us your name, please.
They either hung up or got disconnected.
Okay.
And that's all, that's all the hands that are up.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I will close public comment and, um, Ms. Sincere, yeah, certainly, thank you. I think most people are aware of, of some of the issues, not only on First and Wadsworth, but again, you mentioned it throughout the, the community. And I know there can be a challenge as well when there are encampments for our homeless, uh, folks in that there is proper notice that's required. Depends upon who actually owns the property. So unfortunately, under some of the viaducts, things like that, that's actually a C dot. So, um, I know that our folks are listening and we'll just continue to monitor that. And you did mention the long-term strategy and that's something that we've really been grappling with. And in fact, as a community, this council's number one goal this year prior to COVID was homelessness and really trying to make meaningful change for that. And that's going to continue. But a lot of things were kind of put on hold in the meantime. So, uh, I certainly, uh, we're certainly aware of that and just continue to work with us and our community action team that's out there day in and day out trying to, to address these situations. So I think that's, um, all that I'm going to address and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Hodson for her executive report.
Okay, thank you. I'll make this brief this evening. Um, a couple of updates as it relates to the Community Resources Department. And as you know, as we're receiving, um, public health orders, things are changing rapidly um, related to our programs and facilities managed by the Community Resources Department. So I, my advice is to stay, um, stay in tune with what's happening. You can do that by following Lakewood.org. But here's a couple of updates. We're so excited that we're finally able to open Surfside's free tour. And that opens tomorrow. Perfect timing for these kids to cool down. Um, we're going to use all of the protocols necessary for the health and safety of our guests as well as, as employees. And we're going to comply completely with the public health orders. So again, if you want more information, you do need to make reservations. So please go to lakewood.org/surfside. Next, this is exciting as well. Community Resources Department is preparing to open Carmody Recreation Center. Um, we don't have the opening date yet, but stay tuned. I know that's exciting. And again, we're going to follow all the appropriate protocols as prescribed by the, the most recent health order. Um, so that's exciting. And I think you know that several of the Recreation Center employees have been placed on furlough. So we're calling those employees to come back to work and to, um, open the Carmody Rec Center. And we'll be doing, opening the rec centers incrementally. So again, please, um, stay tuned to the website. That'll have the most updated information. Shelter and event rental, re- reservations are now available for the picnic shelters at a fifty percent list of the listed capacity, up to a hundred and twenty-five people. That begins on July sixth. Lots of people want to get out and picnic with their friends and neighbors and, um, a- again, the necessary protocols will be in place and all you have to do is get online and reserve those, um, rental shelters. We're opening limited access to Washington Heights Art Center. Um, and ceramic studio access will begin on July sixth. Visit the website for more information. I wonder, has anyone seen the new art on the west wall of the Cultural Center? It, it's really cool. I drove past it this morning, this afternoon. It's called Project Spread Hope. And it's artwork located, again, on the west wall of the Lakewood Cultural Center. A local artist, Coco Bear, has become an iconic symbol around the metro area during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And it's an example of art generating hope for all of the community. So please, when you have a chance, drive by the Cultural Center on that west wall, so facing the Public Safety Center. Um, and you'll see, I'm not gonna tell you what it is, but it, it caught my eye and I thought it was really special. So thanks to the folks in the Community Resources Department who are staying on top of all the public health orders, keeping our citizens and our employees safe. So additionally, I wanted to give you just a little bit of information about the business grant program that you approved. It opened up and we have seen three hundred and fifty-four applicants, six of which were Spanish-language applicants. And here are the different categories who applied for grants. Restaurant, nine represented restaurants. Three represented hotels of fifty-plus rooms. Retail represented sixty-seven applicants. Healthcare, fifty. Service providers, eighty. Manufacturers, ten. Construction, thirteen. And other, sixty-two. Forty of those were home-based and three hundred and fourteen were not home-based. So we'll have a full report for you. I just thought you'd be interested to see how that program is, is already, um, already underway. Remember that you authorized three million dollars for that program and we set aside another million for a second installment, should we need to do that. So we'll, in the future, have some, have those conversations with you and listen to how you want to, um, implement the second round, which again, a million is set aside for that. As it relates to the nonprofits grants, um, we, the evaluation committee met on June second. Thank you very much to Mayor Pro Tem Skilling, who was a part of that review committee. And they rated proposals and identified twenty-four organizations to receive funding based on their work to provide COVID-nineteen impact relief to Lakewood residents. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Skilling, for your work on that. And we have received, um, numerous messages of appreciation for that particular program. And finally, we're, we are getting numerous concerns and complaints about fireworks in the city of Lakewood. I just read online that Denver also is hearing all kinds of complaints in the city of Denver. They're saying, um, the complaints have increased ninety-eight percent in Denver. We're seeing that too. Um, the complaints have increased ninety-eight percent in Denver. We're seeing that too. On, or I don't know if that's the same ratio, but sure, we are seeing an increase. As you know, most of the big fireworks displays have been canceled. So it seems that the people are taking it upon themselves and um, and it's concerning. So, the National Fire Protection Association has issued a letter. And they are vigorously discouraging individuals' use of consumer fireworks. It's a pretty powerful letter that they have issued. Talking about the importance of the safety of the residents as well as the burden on first responders. So I, what we'll do is we'll post that letter. Again, it's the NFPA, the National Fair Protection Association. Who is urging people to please um, stay away from the fireworks. There are all kinds of risks associated. Additionally, you'll remember a couple of years ago, our police chief as well as our fire chief. Issued a video talking about um, the dangers of fireworks in the community. And we talked about that today and the chief, the two chiefs are going to look at. Initiating another educational campaign to do everything we can to really discourage the use of fireworks in our city. Um, so keep your fingers crossed. If you can help share that message, that would be really helpful. We, it's, it's quite a burden on first responders and we really want to make sure our residents are safe. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hodson. Much appreciated. Okay, so now um, as, again, as I mentioned at the, the front end of the meeting, the motion to extend. The emergency declaration. I know there's been some questions that came in and I know in the past, there's been different questions from. Council members um, to be heard and, and this is a continuation as the state of Colorado continues. To be in a state of emergency, this would continue ours. And would allow for different things related to meetings. As well as um, uh, fundings, grant fundings, things along those lines. And um, the ask is to continue here in a, uh, for another couple of weeks. So I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tem Skilling to please make that motion.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the city of Lakewood, Colorado. Resulting from the coronavirus slash COVID nineteen pandemic. Pursuant to section one point two seven. Of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation. Of the Lakewood City Manager on March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Extended by majority vote of the city council on multiple occasions. And by this motion extended again until July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Unless earlier extended or terminated by the city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bita, your hand is up. If you just unmute yourself, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment real quick on this. Um, I think it's something that we need to do at this time. Um, and I'm sure our manager will give you reason, the reasons why. And, and I'm in favor of that. But I wanted to say that maybe for the next, because this is gonna come up again in a couple of weeks. Then maybe we could look at entertaining a discussion of how we might tailor this a little bit so that. Those powers of, under the emergency powers that we, that aren't needed might be. Uh, um, I don't wanna say eliminated, but at least um, not extended, shall we say. And, and sort of cherry pick those that are needed going forward because I do think. This is probably gonna go on for a while for various reasons. But maybe we can start looking at ways of um, tailoring it back. And I don't wanna get into that tonight, but it was just the thought that I had. Maybe we could think about having that discussion next time around. That's all.
Thank you, counselor. And, and I think some others had, had raised similar questions to that. Uh, Counselor Abel, if you unmute yourself and you're good to go.
I agree with Counselor Bita. Uh. I had some concerns earlier in the week and wondering if we really needed to extend this uh, declaration. But the numbers don't look good. Uh, they're beginning to creep back up uh, as we open up even further and I'm afraid that. If we curtail these powers, uh. We won't have the nimbleness needed to turn the page back or turn it forward. So. Um, I agree that we need to start thinking about phasing it out, but. The numbers just show that this isn't the time. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Johnson, please unmute yourself and you're good to go.
Thank you. Um, I too would like to weigh in that I support Counselor Bita. Uh, at some point, look at parameters on when it's time to start phasing this out. And now is not the time to do that, but I really support what he is doing. And appreciate Councilman Abel uh, input as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes and this is the extension of the emergency order. And that passes ten ayes and one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay, so next up, we have the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action, contains both. Resolutions and first reading ordinances, which neither are on tonight. Um, just an approval of city council minutes. So I'll ask the. Uh, clerk to read the consent agenda into the record and then I'll open up a public comment on those two proposed items.
Consent agenda consists of item six. Item six, approving minutes of city council meetings. City council meeting, April thirteenth, twenty twenty. City council meeting, May eleventh, twenty twenty.
Hey, Ms. Salazar, is anybody who wishes to comment on? The April thirteenth or May eleventh council minute meeting, council meeting minutes?
Somebody does have their hand up. Caller one six one seven.
Okay, callers one six one seven, please give us your name and just remind you, this pertains to the April thirteenth and May eleventh. City council meeting minutes.
I understand that and my name is Hunter Callahan. I'm not a resident of Lakewood, but I travel through on tourism a lot. And I'm really unhappy with the things that I've seen in your area.
Okay, sir, this is not the opportunity for that public comment? That's during general public comment. This is about the council meeting. Do you wish to comment on the council meeting minutes?
Yes, sir. For next week, I would like to know if y'all have any plans to open your county back up for the Fourth of July ahead of time? So we have time to prepare since y'all are so concerned with the firework issue. I mean, it'd be really a shame to be shut down on the Fourth of July, which is the birth of our freedom of our country.
Okay, sir. Again, I, I appreciate the comment that's, doesn't pertain to this. Section of the evening, so I will uh, go ahead and close public comment. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem, can I have a motion, please?
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of the council minutes, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the council minutes. Counselor Johnson, your hand is up. Is that residual from last time? Okay. All right, seeing none, please cast your votes on the consent agenda. All right, that passes, looks like eleven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. All right, so I'll now open the public hearing on item seven. Will the clerk please read item seven of the record?
Item seven, ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash eighteen. Authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty City of Lakewood annual budget. In the amount of two hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars. In coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. Program funds from the Bureau of Justice Assistance and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Okay. So I'll now open public comment and just a reminder, this is a second reading ordinance and public comment. Um, per our rules is to be directed towards twenty twenty dash eighteen. So with that, Ms. Salazar?
No one has raised their hand.
Okay, I will now uh, close public comment and ask Mayor Pro Tem Skilling for a motion.
I move for the adoption of ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash eighteen on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes eleven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. Okay, next up is general business. And um, there was one thing, two things. So counselors uh, Bita and Gutwine. You had had those items kind of on ice for your council requests. And we can throw those back on for July sixth, so those will get back in the queue. And I certainly know. Counselor Bita, you would like to address that. Counselor Gutwine, you were um, kind of. Not sure if you were needed, if it was ready to go, not go yes or no yet. So. Keep that in mind. If you don't want to have that go forth, we can keep that off.
I would like to continue it, but I will.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
So, so that's fine. So we'll have those two requests for council action. Uh, Counselor Skilling?
So uh, just a reminder, July sixth is a study session that is going to be. Extremely uh, full. So just keeping that in mind that July sixth. Is the night that we are set to review. The pending legislation on five G and small cell. And so. Just keeping that in mind, because I'd heard July sixth is the date for these items.
Yes. Yeah, well, and, and Ms. Hodson, go ahead.
I'm sorry, and, and the other item on July sixth is the update that we promised as it relates to the budget. So by July sixth, we'll have the, the June, I'm sorry, we'll have the May, end of May numbers, which will be critical. Because um, soon after May, we started, of course, our retailers began to open again. So. That'll be yet another um, protracted conversation, I believe.
Yeah. Well, I, I think as we get back to normal, that's kind of our style. So. Um, you know, we, we, we're used to having these kinds of meetings. Uh, Counselor Bita, your hand is up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a quick comment on that. My, the. The item that we were talking about relates to um. The uh, White Fence Farm and, and the ordinance that, that relates to um. Uh, I forget the term, but it, it uh, it is kind of timely because we're getting a lot of comments about. The condition of White Fence Farm. And, and the whole point of this item was to address that uh, in, in terms of going forward. So. I would like to get this um, heard as soon as, you know, reasonable. Um, because there is some things going on that need to, that will play into it. Namely, the deteriorating condition um, on the property. And this relates to that, so.
And, and might I just suggest to Counselor that when we look at different changes to ordinances, we don't base them on. Single entities or projects. This is something that would potentially be for the whole city.
Yes, thank you. And that is right. And um, what, this is. An example of why we need to kind of take a look at this proposed language.
Great.
You're, you're right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
That's all.
Good. Yep, that's great. And, and also along the lines of, of the five G discussion, it's really important that the community. Um, continues to engage. There's a lot of opportunities uh, for that engagement um, going forward. So. Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention again, and I, I've, I've asked for this uh, from the start, that. The citizens be permitted to put on somebody at the study session of their choice. To, to give another perspective. And so I think I'd like to formally make a motion that they be permitted to do that. And have equal time uh, to do so. Uh, I can't quite understand why that wouldn't be permitted.
So Counselor Springsteen, we have policies and procedures and processes in place. We represent the residents. So what you're talking about is a certain group of residents. Who are trying to engage. You're not talking about a representative for all the residents. And so everybody has the same process to follow, whether you're in the industry. Or whether you're with the citizens group. We are elected to represent the residents. That's our job. And so our processes are that they will have the opportunity to pool their time. They have the opportunity to engage on Lakewood speaks. We've also carved out a second study session for them. So. It's important, I think, that we follow our processes. As you could imagine, then if you want a certain group to have equal time. Then ten others may want different folks to have equal time. And so councils worked hard. To create this process that allows for community engagement on study sessions. Which for years did not happen. And so. That is the process that the city council, and I would say if council wants to change all of our rules. Around this, that's another discussion.
Okay, um, and, and I'm gonna ask Mayor that you talk to me with respect and um, and. I, I would like for you to understand that I'm a new counselor. I have a learning curve. And I know that you want me to understand everything within the first couple of months of doing this without. Any direction from staff or anybody in the city. Um, I am learning. I would like for you to not talk down to me that way anymore. I feel that it's discriminatory. And I would also say that I have made a formal motion here. And if it fails, I understand, but I have made a motion on behalf of my constituents. Who have been working very hard on this issue.
Okay, and I, one thing I, your. Motion's not in line or in place with what we do. And secondly, with all due respect, Ms. Springsteen. People have tried to reach out to you numerous times to engage you, to no avail. As an example was Mr. Cox's review. Which the emails went unreturned, as did the review. You've had the opportunity and a request to meet with all of the city staff. To have an initiation and you have not engaged. And so I don't have the luxury to have these conversations other than in this body because I cannot get you to engage.
And Mayor, that is not accurate. The last time I spoke with Ms. Hodgson. We discussed that she was going to try to set up a meeting for me. With some of the leaders within the city. And secondly, I am going to give Mr. Cox a review. I need a little more lead time than a week because I do have a day job. And I, I am sorry that I didn't get that in, in time, but uh, it will be coming this week.
So, okay, that has already, okay, that has already taken place and closed, just like the city manager's review as well. So. Um, if you.
Well, maybe you should give counselors more lead time than a week or two to do something important like that.
So, um. You know, i- if you want to make a motion, and I, I don't know what that motion would be, I will grant you that ability. And, and I guess. Are you making it for a single group? Are you making it for anybody who deems himself an expert to come before council and have equal time?
Well, uh, the Lakewood Broadband Task Force has been working on this tirelessly. So that group has an attorney I know who's very, very well-versed. Um. Who has been working on this issue. And if, if they would like to present. That attorney or somebody like him with that expertise. To uh, give a point and counterpoint. Uh, on what we're discussing with regard to changes in the ordinance. I think that, that would be very helpful. So I, I would move that the Lakewood Broadband Task Force be permitted to uh, have somebody. to have somebody attend the study session and to provide another perspective on changes to the ordinance.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, please cast your votes. And that motion fails. Looks like, if you please leave those up, it looks like it's eight to three. The nays being Franks, Paul, Labir, Harrison, Gutwine, Vincent, and Skilling. So it looks like it's seven to four. Okay. Councillor Franks, your hand is up.
Um, I just wanted to weigh in to make sure that the public, at least from my vote perspective, is clear. Me and councillor Able were two of the folks who took very seriously when we joined council of making sure that the public had ample opportunity to not only speak at our regular meetings, but at study sessions. We ensured that there was the opportunity to pool time. We, as a city, have implemented things like Lakewood Speaks. We certainly all have our ward meetings. We are all available to receive information. So certainly my vote wasn't to not allow for the full discussion. It was simply that I believe we have already put in all of those mechanisms and certainly remain open to receiving any documents and hearing that testimony the night of. So I just wanted to clarify my vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Labir?
Yeah, I was just going to make some similar comments to councillor Franks. I mean, and, you know, I want to hear from everybody about all the different issues. My concern is that we have a little, a little bit of analysis paralysis on council as it is, or having a difficult time getting through things, either support for or against. And frankly, I think if people don't want to see these amendments or changes to 5G, then I think their representatives should vote no. And if they're okay with seeing things change in the way that has been drafted or with motions that are presented, then I think we should vote yes and move on. So just wanted to piggyback on that. I do want to hear from everybody, though, however we can do that. And we have created a, a process for that. That was a pretty exhausting process to create in the first place. Thanks.
Okay. Councillor Able?
There we go. I just wanted to make sure we're going to get copies of the, all the red line versions. And are those going to be in a unified version or are we going to have three separate documents? Or we, or will we have one document with everybody's comments in the margins?
Thank you, councillor Able. I can, I can answer that, Mayor, if that's all right. We are just finalizing or getting those red lines. And Ben, can you please describe how that will, what the format that will take?
Yeah. I think what it's looking like now is you'll have lots of different versions of the red line. So you can see the independent comments that we've received. So for instance, an industry red line, Lakewood Broadband red line, the red line that was initially put into place. What you'll also receive, and what's taken a while to get, is we've asked our legal counsel, our special counsel on this, to go through the suggested edits from Lakewood Broadband, the, the the group or organization that council member Springsteen was referencing. They provided edits, suggested edits, and Mr. Fellman has been going through those. It's about 44 pages. And then providing legal citation to the ones that he thinks we can do and legal citation to the ones he does not think we can do. So the, the thought is that that document will be the easiest document for you all to work off of on the 6th. But, uh, you know, that it's really up to you all, however you want to work off of it.
Could Mr. Fellman do the same thing with the industry red line?
I believe he's incorporated some of those maybe in the form of a comment on there. But I think the industry red line is more comments saying, you know, we're okay with this, we're not okay with this, as opposed to a, a true red line like what was provided by the Lakewood Broadband Task Force.
I would kind of like the same treatment for what they think is okay and what is not as we give through the broadband coalition's ideas of what's acceptable and what's not.
I'm not sure that the industry has had a chance to look at what the broadband coalition put.
No, no, I'm talking about Mr. Fellman looking at the industry's red line version in the same fashion he's looking at the broadband coalition's version.
I'll talk to him about that and see if he, he can incorporate those all into the same document. It gets a little confusing and.
I, I just want to know whether he agrees with what the industry red line says, with what their suggestions are.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Gutwine?
Thank you. And I also have sent in a couple of potential amendments for council to consider that I discussed, or I, I asked Mr. Fellman and Mr. Goldstein questions about them. And my understanding is that the same process will be gone through for those as well. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I, I think those comments are already incorporated in there based on the conversation we had last week.
Okay, great. Thank you. And those, just so you all know, one is related to, they're both, actually both related to transparency. One is related to transparency in contractors that do the actual physical work. And then one is about ensuring that there's transparency to our community about where the sites are. So that potentially, you know, that there's all kinds of different reasons we might want access to that information. One of them would be potentially identifying underserved communities or whatever else, you know, the public would like to know. So you, I just wanted to let you all know that I'm planning to put those forward.
Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And just Mr. Goldstein, I, I think we're saying on Friday, all red lines will be released to the public and the council. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
So my comments earlier tonight, what I said about an action-packed and very full July 6th meeting, I will just remind all of my colleagues that once this thing is public, all of these things are published on Friday. This isn't one of those where we can wait until the day of, not that anyone does that, but in case you were planning to and having a long July 4th, I suggest you all get started on this as early as possible because it is a lot of material. And I know that staff, it's taken them a significant amount of time to get through it, and they're well versed in this. And so I think I will just send out a little reminder that once it's published, just be aware that there's a beast waiting and set aside some time for it. That's all.
We will also be mailing hard copies. So you'll, you'll receive the electronic version, I believe on Friday. And then probably the hard copy, if we can get it done earlier, we'll send it earlier. But at a minimum, the hard copy will also be mailed out on Friday.
Great. Okay, we'll wrap up general business and go to reports. I'll start with Ward 1. Councilors Johnson and Able?
No report.
Councillor Able, did you have anything?
Oh, I was just deferring to councillor Johnson.
Okay. Word 2, councillors Labir and Vincent?
Yes, I have a, a couple of things. I wanted to let this council know that we had met councillor Harrison, Abel and myself had met with Head Start. And they were so, so very extremely grateful for the money that was given to the Edgewater Collective. Even though it states it's Edgewater, it encompasses the 802.14 ZIP code. And they were able to provide meals and lunches and some support for people in that ZIP code that may not have access to all the opportunities that, that other people have. So they, I just wanted to send that out because sometimes we don't hear that kind of feedback. So it was great and they were very grateful. I do have one question. On the, on the fireworks, what I'm hearing from some constituents is not so much fireworks are bad, but that they're calling the non-emergency number, they're calling with specific addresses. They're asked if they want to call back and they're saying, yes, what, what happened with this? And they're not getting the callbacks. Also too, I don't know how we work through this. But if anybody's tried to call the non-emergency number, you have to go through more than several minutes of, of a message in English and then Spanish, then another message in English and Spanish, and then another message in English and Spanish. And so people are saying they can't even report that without going through all that. And by that time, the fireworks, you know, are gone. And so those are the couple of things that I've heard about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Vincent. I'm sorry, Mayor. We'll look into that. Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councillor Labir, anything?
Uh, nothing to report. You know, councillor Vincent made some comments about fireworks and I, I was just going to echo similar comments. So thanks for her doing that. And thanks Kathy for looking into that.
Great. Word 3, councillors Bita and Springsteen? If you want to unmute yourself.
There we go. Ladies first.
Um, I have nothing to report. We, we are having a ward meeting next Saturday. Do you want to help me with this mic Saturday, the 20?
It's this coming Saturday.
That is the 20?
7.
37th. Thank you. Uh, I assume, and councillor Bita, I, I don't know what the final analysis of what we set up for that was.
We will, we will have Robert Smith of our Economic Development to present a program on the, the Business Recovery Act and the funds that we're going to be dispersing in an update on it. So that's going to be the speaker for our ward meeting. And then the normal questions and answer and public comment as well. And then, are you done? Councillor Springsteen, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. And I do have a couple of things. One, we're getting a lot of complaints in Ward 3 about fireworks and, you know, there's been a lot said. And I just want to add that, you know, it's really hard on, on our neighbors. And I'm asking all of our, our members in Ward 3, all of my neighbors to please be considerate of your, your neighbors and your other people living around you. Because this, uh, this fireworks, not only is it dangerous, it's a fire hazard. It can cause personal, you know, serious personal injury to you and to others around you. But it also, the noise is very disruptive. You know, we've got people with pets that pets are, are, get, gets really scared when they hear these loud noises. And so if you care about, you know, about your animals and the, and the pets of other people, I'd ask you to consider that. It's also very, could cause problems for our veterans, you know. When you start, this fireworks that's going off, it, it simulates, and by, by design, it simulates a war zone. And for our, you know, for our veterans, it can really cause some, some unwanted reactions. And then finally, we've got people trying to sleep at night because they have to get up early, go to work. And, and you're disrupting that. So I ask you to please be considerate of, of your neighbors on this. And it is illegal, oh, by the way, as well. So, and then I have one other thing I want to say, you know. A few short weeks ago, police officers around this country were being lauded along with other first responders as heroes for their continued willingness to protect all of us in the face of the pandemic. They were recognized for daily exposing themselves, not only to the usual dangers on the street, but also for subject, subjecting themselves to possible infection as they went about their duties. We said we were grateful for their dedication and their service. Then the tragic death of George Floyd, Floyd in Minneapolis at the hands of a rogue police officer occurred. His tragic death has led to some to vilify our dedicated police agents in Lakewood. I want to say tonight clearly and unequivocally that I am very proud of our Lakewood Police Department and I'm very proud of the men and women who serve and wear the badge and the uniform. I am proud of them because day in and day out, they show honor, integrity, compassion and restraint as they go about their duties of maintaining law and order in these troubled times. That is due to the character of our agents and the selection, training and oversight we have in place in our city of Lakewood. To ask for fair and reasonable reform at a national level is fine. But let us not forget that we have one of the finest departments manned by some of the finest agents in the nation. It serves as a model to other departments. In fact, an inordinate number of our agents have gone on to serve as positions as chief, chief of police in other departments around the state and around the country. I ask tonight of those of you who agree with me to reach out and let our agents know that you stand behind them like I do. Send them an email through me if you want, or to Chief McCaskey. But send them a basket of fruit or a box of those, of donuts with this message, but let them know you're behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Ward 4, Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling and councillor Franks?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We, we do have the sustainability awards that I believe everybody received an email today about. I bring that up because I was on the selection committee for this year's award winners. That is reading from the press release that the city sent out today. In lieu of an in-person ceremony this year, normally we have everybody come in and it's a packed chambers and there's food and we do a lot of pictures and all of that. But in lieu of an in-person ceremony this year, the city is acknowledging the winners on social media. And that's at Lakewood colo, C-O-L-O. Lakewood Colo, I guess that's how you'd say that. That's Twitter and at Plan Lakewood on Facebook. Or keep it simple, just go to lakewood.org forward slash sustainability awards and you can see them all there. There's a whole listing of very worthy recipients this year and you can read all about them. So congratulations to all of those winners.
Great. Councillor Franks? Nothing. Word 5, councillors Harrison and Gutwine?
Um, I wanted to, I don't have any formal report other than to say thank you for all of those residents that are wearing their masks. I tell you, it's really, really important for us to protect everybody else. Thank you. It helps. The other thing that I wanted to do is apologize to my ward mate. Last week when we were giving reports, I called her my assistant. Let me tell you, this lady is far from an assistant. She is a star. So I wanted to apologize to her for doing that. I didn't mean it. I, my brain couldn't come up with ward mate. My brain couldn't come up with wardmate. So that was the next best. So thank you, Dana, for all you do, and I really appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Karen. I actually didn't even notice that. So no need to apologize at all. And it's been an honor to work with you. Yeah, I think I do have just a couple of additional things I want to say. I didn't prepare a statement or anything, but I just, we got an email this week about an alleged hate crime against a Ward five resident member of the Sikh community. And I just, I'm just really upset to hear about this. And I think that you know, we're all, tensions are very high right now and we're going through a pandemic, we're going through a civil rights movement. There's a lot, a lot of things going on and I really hope that some good positive change comes. But I just, I just want to say, you know, that I certainly, of course, do not condone that. And I hope that everyone feels safe in our Lakewood community. And I know that, you know, there are charges being brought, but I just feel like something like that has never happened in Ward five before. And I just, you know, it's incredibly upsetting. I, you know, my heart just hurts for our community right now. And on that, on a different note, but maybe a similar note, I am personally going to be trying to do a better job of advocating for people who don't always have a voice on our council, in our council rooms or in Lakewood and I want to really understand how every policy impacts minorities and people of color before I vote on them. I've tried, I've tried to do the best that I can. I also, you know, acknowledge I'm a white person and I want to learn. And I want to thank our police chief for his time today because I had some questions about one of the things that we just voted on today. And he spent, you know, maybe an hour with me going through. I was reading questions from the ACLU website. And I was very impressed that we already do all of the things recommended. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's going to be a goal of mine to always consider an equity lens on every policy that we look at moving forward. And I just, you know, I hope that we can all give each other a little extra, this is so cheesy, but just a little extra love right now in the middle of all this, so that we can, you know, come together and move forward together. So thank you. And that is, that is all.
Thank you very much. So I'll echo a few things and certainly, we've been hearing about the fireworks really since March, when we started hearing them around 8:00 PM, when folks were thanking our first responders, right? Some were howling and some were setting off fireworks. And it's bad. And, you know, we used to have the big boom bash and unfortunately, a lot of fireworks displays are just canceled. And so you're not going to be able to have that ability. And so please just try to be neighborly, try to be patient, certainly with the police, as you can imagine, there's a lot of high priority things going on in the community. And I know it can be frustrating when you call and by the time they get there, there's nothing there. But this leads to a larger conversation about where we're at. It's getting hot. There is a lot of unrest, there's a lot of uncertainty. And these are going to be a challenging couple of months for all of us in the community. And we're going to just have to continue to work together to make sure that we can move through this. And you know, when you're mayor, you get a lot of different things kind of thrown at you. And when there's concerns about your city council, you may not all hear those, but I certainly get most of them. And so I would like to encourage Counselor Abel, who had some conversations with a constituent about a code of ethics, to maybe put together a council request and look at what that looks like. We did receive some emails and you heard again at public comment some things related to an incident. And, you know, I am sorry that if somebody feels like they're being singled out, that's not the case. There's just not an avenue to communicate that. And silence has not helped anything. And so a lot of times I'm left to fill the vacuum of the different things that are being said. And it is challenging. And in some ways, it's not fair. And so we have heard again that people feel threatened, that people feel scared. And so I want all of this council to stand up and say that no matter who you are or what the situation is, you need to feel safe with your council and feel safe reaching out to them and not feel like there could be some sort of retribution. And I'm asking all the council to make that a commitment and to stand up for that. And you saw and heard tonight from different points of view. And I'd love to see all of this put aside and have us move on. That power lies with you on this body to figure out how to move forward. And so Counselor Abel, I know that you did say you would do that and I appreciate that. And so I think we need to look at having that committee started. You got a little flavor tonight of what some of our police deal with. And for those of you watching, and I know we all received one email and I thank you for that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on. And again, it's easy to react, it's easy to retaliate. It's easy to say things that you don't mean or to cause harm. And we want to be the leaders in the community that make sure that there's safety. And the flip side of that is you have to be able to listen to things you don't want to hear. That starts with me. Certainly, I have plenty of flaws or different things along those lines. But that's what we're here to do is listen and try to learn and try to grow and become better leaders in our community. You may be wondering why there were bad words that were said. And for some people, that this is not new. They go to other council meetings and do a similar thing. They also have the right to speak and we try to make sure that they manage that decorum, but that three minutes is their three minutes and we'll try to honor that as challenging and as painful as that can be. And that has been challenged before. And other communities have paid a dear price by reacting in a way that caused people to lose their three minutes to speak. So what turned out to be, as many would have thought, a quick and easy and painless night, turned into another adventure in the city of Lakewood with the Lakewood City Council. So I want to thank you all. I want to again, thank our staff, thank our police department, and wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, minus the big boom bash. And we will see you on July 6th. So Ms. Hodson, anything? Okay. I'm losing who I have. The clerks, I have two clerks. Nothing. There she is. Sorry, Ms. Millard, you're at the bottom. Bernie's up top. Okay. All right. Mr. Cox, anything? Great. With that, we will adjourn at 8:30 PM. Oh. Counselor, okay, you're waving. All right. We'll adjourn. Thank you.